...
Ooh, Susie, can you call the roles, please?
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeMore.
I'm here, and now I will turn the meeting over to JP.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and City Council. Tonight, we'd like to recognize three of our officers for outstanding performance of their duties, and all of this happened towards pretty much the end of 2019. Officers Van Solcom, O'Shears are going to be receiving a life-saving award, and they were nominated by their peers as well as myself, as well as Sergeant Hurst from the command staff and our support staff, Leslie Heffron. I get Sergeant Hurst come up and assist me with these, and I need Officers Van Solcom and O'Sheers to the front, please.
This is for Officer Van Solcom. On Wednesday, December 4th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m., Officer Scott Van Solcom reported to an overdose, responded to an overdose of a 29-year-old male. At arrival, Officer Van Solcom found the victim blue and without respirations or pulse. The suspect's mother was performing CPR. Officer Van Solcom immediately took over CPR efforts and attached the AED. Officer Van Solcom performed CPR for nearly nine minutes before the medical, other medical personnel arrived. Officer Van Solcom also administered two doses of Narcan to the victim while awaiting additional medical assistance and while performing CPR. Due to Officer Van Solcom's immediate actions, quick thinking, and calm professional demeanor, the 29-year-old was eventually revived and walked out of the residence to wait paramedics saving his life. Officer Van Solcom's actions on this day is an example of selfless service, dedication to community, and performing his duties in a stressful situation. Therefore, on this day, we are awarding Officer Van Solcom the life-saving citation. This is for Officer Sheers. On Thursday, December 12th, at 12:15 p.m., Officer Sheers was dispatched by elderly victim that was choking. Officer Sheers arrived at the scene within two minutes to find the victim with bystanders lying on the ground semi-conscious and in distress. Officer Sheers lying on his first aid training and took immediate action. Officer Sheers lifted the victim to her feet and administered the Heimlich maneuver, dislodging the food that was blocking her airway. The victim regained consciousness and was breathing on her own. Due to Officer Sheers' immediate actions, quick thinking, and calm professional demeanor, the elderly victim was revived and saved her life. Officer Sheers' actions on this day is an example of selfless service, dedication to his community, and performing his duties in a stressful situation. Therefore, we are awarding him the life-saving citation. All right, Scott, stay there. This is the citation for distinguished service. Officer Scott Van Solcom for the past five years has put in the hard work to help out the Lowell Police Department and the city of Lowell by utilizing the 1033 program. His efforts in this non-law enforcement endeavor has saved the city and the department hundreds of not thousands of dollars, researching and locating surplus government equipment that is used by our department and citywide. He has provided for the recovery of the police department, a staff department for the department, firearms trailer, firearms equipment, a metal detector, a pop machine, IBO cruiser cases, server cage, computer equipment, gators for the DPW, the jaws of life for the fire department, and accounts of others, items such as tools, binoculars, and office equipment. All these items are purchased outright, which being a thousand of dollars would probably not have been affordable. Today, we'd like to recognize Officer Scott Van Solcom for his extraordinary efforts, diligence, and perseverance that saved the Lowell PD, DPW, and the city thousands of dollars. These efforts are beyond the scope, but as normally expected of our law enforcement officers, and are considered complex and tedious assignments. Therefore, we are awarding Officer Scott Van Solcom the citation for distinguished service for his efforts and hard work in the 1033 program that represent a significant contribution to the department, the city, and other city services. Detective Lauren will also be receiving the distinguished service award. Over the past several years, Detective Lauren has worked within the community to raise funds to make sure that the Lowell school kids, children, have the appropriate winter gear through the Cold Weather Warrior Project. He has coordinated with local school districts to determine which lower-income children needed the gear. Detective Lauren and other officers have gone and purchased the gear that was requested. Detective Lauren has worked on promoting the project to gain the funds to continue the project for the past five years. He has been in charge of coordinating the Cold Weather Warrior Project from its inception. Over the past five years, Detective Lauren and the Cold Weather Warrior Project has raised thousands of dollars to hand out hundreds of winter clothing items to local schoolchildren. The Cold Weather Warrior Project is beyond what's expected of Detective Lauren. This endeavor is time-consuming, complex, yet rewarding. Therefore, we are awarding Detective Gordy Lauren the citation for distinguished service, for his dedication, extraordinary effort, diligence, and continued support of the Cold Weather Warriors Project.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, more changes. Suits.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeMore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, so it's in discussion for items on the agenda. Item five, whole business presentation in the RRC basement, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As part of the, in our partnership with the MEDC, we've had a, we are looking to possibly engage in the Redevelopment Ready Community Initiative. In order for us to be eligible for funds for future projects with MEDC, we are mandated to do this program. And as a result, the first step that we have to do is we have to have a baseline report completed by them, and Pablo Mahano is here tonight from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, RRC program, to provide you a presentation and update as to what we need to do.
All right, so I am Pablo Mahano, as he said. I am a Senior Redevelopment Ready Communities Planner at the MEDC. Along with me, I brought your Community Assistance Team Specialist as well.
Dana Fowler.
So she has a bunch of history in this area, serving for the Grand Haven Chamber, and working with MEDC through the Michigan Main Street program as well. Go on to the next slide. So the MEDC is the economic development arm for the state of Michigan. It's a quasi-public department, state government. We have three departments, which is the Pure Michigan, you've seen the Pure Michigan campaign, marketing, communications, all located there. You have the Business Development Department that focuses on your industrial sites and international business, trying to retain that talent and keep them here in our state of Michigan. We have Community Development, which has the Community Revitalization Program, the Michigan Main Street Program, Redevelopment Ready Communities, and the Brownfield Team. Next slide. So the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, our strategic focus is to empower communities so they can proactively shape their future on a solid planning, zoning, and economic development foundation. So in order to access, be prioritized for those community development incentives, you have to engage into the RRC program. And there's two ways to access those programs. So if you do not have a traditional downtown, then you would have to get certified through the program in order to be considered prioritized for those funding. If you have a traditional downtown like the city of Lowell, you just have to be engaged in the program. Next slide. So now more than ever, we see that communities need talent, so that talent wants place. And we see more that place needs business, and that business needs talent in order to thrive. Next slide. So these are the RRC guiding principles, and I like to tell a lot of my communities that RRC is just a tool, and it's up to the community and how you use that tool in order for it to be effective. So it's really a third-party video, your planning and zoning, your plans, process, policies, and practices. So we really like to focus on how you're proactively engaging with your community, your partnerships, sharing that community vision, being transparent, efficient, and predictable with your process. Next slide, please. So it's three steps to getting certified. Step one, step one is getting engaged into the program, which you already are. Step two is evaluation, and we're right here near the bottom, so I'm presenting the baseline report to the community. And then step three is getting certified. Next slide. So these are the 10 regional prosperity regions throughout the state of Michigan. I, my main focus is on regions two, three, and four. And so we have a couple certified communities already on the west side, which is Alligan, Grand Haven, Grand Rapids, Hudsondale, Middleville, Middleville, and Meskeen. Myself, I work with 81 communities throughout the state. So on the screen, you see the six RRC best practices. These were developed by the public and private sector experts. The RRC practices are the standard for the evaluation. The best practices that you see are evolving, and our team along with experts have made changes throughout the years based on feedback and good planning practices. So this was the evaluation snapshot for the city of Lowell, which has 33% complete, 25% in process, which is the yellow, and red is either missing or needs to be uploaded online, or just needs to get updated. So already meeting, having your DDA plan online, having up-to-date user-friendly ordinance, having those historic preservation standards, green infrastructure, parking, and housing types. You're allocating training for funding, you have a qualified intake professional, and really just everything you need to find is on Minico, which I've had experience with before. Again, the yellow is just talking about you're missing probably one or two items, maybe something's missing, maybe something's missing posted online. There's a bunch of, there are a series of expectations set in each criteria. So it might be that you have three of four expectations, you're just missing one. So this is what the yellow is really saying. So that's annual progress reporting on the master plan, developing actionable steps for identified goals, developing an easy flow chart for people to see step one to step five through your development process. Having a development project tracker to know where your projects are at any given time. Creating a feedback mechanism, simple surveys, saying, "How are we doing throughout our process? Can we improve in our process?" And developing desired skill sets for development-related boards. Mainly just going online and saying, "If you have an interest in design, buildings, codes, or architecture, this certain board may be a perfect fit for you to join." Opportunities for improvement, again, the red, which is missing, is developing overarching economic development strategy, developing a unified marketing strategy, working with partners such as Lowell Chamber to make sure messaging is consistent and up-to-date, reviewing plans for alignment. And this means your master plan, your capital improvements plan, your DDA plan, your economic development plan when it's implemented, and your marketing strategy. Make sure that the messaging is consistent and it's throughout. So moving forward, the next step is within 30 days of this presentation to adopt the resolution to proceed. This is included in that report you have, saying, "We agree with the recommendations that you provided, and we're going to work to accomplish those within the next couple of years." It's not that you, you don't have to follow what the recommendation, recommended timelines are on there. They're just recommendations. You can take it at your own pace, one subject every seven months, one subject every year. It's really up to you, and we try to work with the community with what works best for you. So the value in RRC. Again, it's an ongoing partnership, access to a team of planning professionals, professionals and partnering consultants, having access to our RRC online library, so most of the items from best practice one through six, we have an online library of what other communities are doing. We tell communities that you can really R&amp;D a community's economic development plan, R&amp;D their downtown plan. And when I say R&amp;D, it's ripoff and duplicate. So it's pretty simple when it comes to that, just making sure it fits with your community and makes sense to you. And it's being prioritized for community development, funding tools, and you have technical assistance to match funding. So if something needs to be updated, such as your master plan, or you want to create an economic development plan, beautiful rides, $75,000, $25,000, up to $30,000 in match funding towards that plan. And you also have access, eventually, when you're close to certification, to our redevelopment services team who'll come in, evaluate buildings, review, maybe there's buildings that are under use. They'll come in, they'll identify sites, there's some pre-development assistance funds towards that as well. They'll package sites for you, they'll market sites for you, they'll come in with the development team and try to help you turn over any sites that you do identify. Next slide. So these are resources, myplace.org, you can follow us on LinkedIn, Facebook, and we also have a Twitter. Next slide. And I am here for any questions that you have, and so is Dana. She could talk a lot about the CD tools that we have.
I have a couple questions.
Yes.
First question I have is, the communities that have completed this and graduated from the RRC program, which communities that have followed everything that was dictated to them to do have actually seen an increase in taxable value or an increase in ROI? I couldn't tell you that exact number. My understanding is zero. I understand the city of Portland, which was your gold standard for the Michigan Main Street program, has now, because they were required to go into RRC, is now pulling out of the RRC program and the Main Street program because basically the standards that are being set here without really any guaranteed rate of return or anything. I understand these are best practices, and no one's arguing that we shouldn't be doing best practices. But what I see here is this is a bureaucratic attempt by the state of Michigan for communities to comply in order to receive economic development funds, and I don't think that's very fair. I'm seeing, what I see for, especially for smaller communities, these requirements are almost impossible for a community our size to be able to meet all of these. We're, my concern is we're setting ourselves up for failure because of a bureaucratic oversight by the state of Michigan. And don't feel bad, we, there were a number of city managers at the city manager conferences. It stressed this to your executive leadership, so not pointing this at you. But I, my concern is, is we have to go through this program in order for us to be able to consider for future economic development projects. But what I'm concerned about is unfunded mandates, which is a heavily amended, doesn't allow us to do, which you're not supposed to be doing. My concern is you're going to make us do some unfunded mandates here in order to be eligible for economic development funds. So I have concerns about this, but I'm just curious as to, have those things been thought about at MEDC?
I mean, we have, we're working with different communities, from small communities. I'm working with communities like in Roger City, city of Harrisville, city of Sheboygan, communities in Manzalona, Benzonia, communities in rural poor here even, that are undertaking right now temporarily. They're all meeting the best practices, it doesn't mean you have to spend $40,000, $60,000 into implementing a new plan. You can look online what's available.
But what happens when the state of Michigan changes that? Because the state of Michigan changes things all the time to us. That's where I'm concerned with.
This is how, I mean, we can't predict the future, this is how we're functioning, we're functioning in the present, and it is what it is. I mean, I can't predict the future, I don't know if it's, RRC's not going to be here next year. What I know is that RRC is here now, and this is the way we get prioritized for community development incentives.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, because we've had a couple of projects that have gotten MEDC grant. Brett Slagle across the street was headed down one path with the MEDC, and Dick, I believe there was some problems with the language, that that didn't work for the city. And so that grant was not provided, and MEDC found another way to help him through another program. And he is currently moving forward on another project, which I believe there's MEDC money involved on the 12 apartments or condos above 312 East Main, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
So this program that you're putting to us now, that Mike is questioning, is one of 20 programs? There's other avenues for us to get money, which we have in the past and will continue to get, is that true?
Well, as we're working through the process, we're prioritizing communities and projects in communities that are participating in RRC. And I believe that the city was kind of in that process when some of those tools were explored for those projects before, and we're still working with Brett on this new space as well. I don't know the exact number of tools that we have or resources that we have exactly, but all the properties that are within the downtown district have access to, let's say, the Community Revitalization Program, which is the program that we use here in downtown Lowell. And we do, we have kind of like a prioritization worksheet or kind of a guidance tool that you can look at to see how we evaluate projects. And being engaged in RRC is one of them, along with some other different benchmarks or checkmarks you might meet around placemaking, if it's a historic property, if it, you know, is a reused or adaptive reuse building, but that's part of our process in evaluating incentive tools.
Okay, so if we, you know, our city manager and staff is very busy. If this turns out to be this, our RRC program is just more involved financially or time-wise than we choose to participate in, there still are other MEDC grants and programs available to us, is that correct?
The community does need to be engaged in the program in order to be prioritized for the incentives.
Okay, so we said we could do one every seven months or one a year. So as long as we say we're involved and, and once a year accomplish something, then that gets us where we need to be.
At your own pace, exactly.
An option for us, I mean, we certainly don't want to miss out on anything, but if the returns are minimal, I have trouble justifying time and wanting to pursue them. Appreciate your letting us know that, Mike, apparently you heard that, you were at or something.
It's quite an issue with other city managers statewide about this program. It's unfortunately, the concern is it's a cookie-cutter approach to economic development, and really doesn't, from the city managers I've talked to, they're not, they're not a fan of this.
Is all we're doing buying our way to the top of the list? Is that what you're saying, like we're prioritized if we complete this whole program?
We don't have to complete it, if we just occasionally work on it, I mean, and move towards it. But we're a small city with limited resources, if it takes us a few years to get there, during that time, we're still behind.
I'm sorry, there's limited resources statewide, so we're prioritizing those funding towards communities that are engaged in the RRC program.
Right.
That answered my question, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Item B990, North Washington.
At our last meeting, we tabled the discussion regarding the future of 990 North Washington. As you recall, at the last meeting, we discussed that the lease expires on June 30th of 2020, and there are several options we could consider. And I know Mr. Dietzel stated that he would be willing to attend our next council meeting on Tuesday, the 18th, so I don't know if you want to table this until then. In the meantime, I did get some updated information from the assessor that's in front of you and will put in your packet for the next time. And what it pertains to is the value of the parcel that the house is on. The value of that parcel is $30,000, and it would have to be a one acre lot if you did separate that parcel. And then if you took the other two acres, the value of that land is about $45,000. So I gave you that information to help you with this. Also, I believe we received inquiries from about six different people interested in buying the property, but still need, I know the concern at the last council meeting was having him come and approach the council, and to my understanding, he will be at the next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we table this until we hear from Gary Dietzel. I think it's important that we, none of us existing council members know the history, and I think we should hear from his perspective, because everybody has valid concerns about the amount of rent, et cetera, et cetera, and I'd just like to hear how it all started. And, I mean, he's been there 39 years, so.
I'll support that.
Sorry for the long motion.
No, I'll support it, but I won't repeat it.
Yeah.
Anybody else, questions, discussion? Motion in a second to table Sue.
Mayor DeMore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right, item three, Lou Bender, Mike.
Yep, we had our meeting with Lou Bender on the 23rd, we thought it was a good meeting. I did submit to you the copy of the report from the meeting. Thought it was in your packet, I don't see it. Anyhow, I think the, what Lou recognizes is that, obviously, that as a group, we've come a long, a long way in the last three years, and, but there's always room for improvement. And obviously, I think one of the things that we got out of the last, at least what I got out of the last meeting was the three things that you want to see as a council are more of a police presence in the downtown district, everybody, you know, a stronger approach to code enforcement. And once we get the sidewalks addresses bringing that the city owns, bring back the sidewalk program. And I think since that meeting, I know I've talked to department heads about that, and I know from last week, I know we've stuck up our presence quite a bit on Main Street with police. And also, code enforcement, that's always a work in progress, and we are looking at the, we're looking at the sidewalk program again. I don't, I think a program that we have in place is good, it's just a matter of it being implemented is where we, I don't know what we do, what we do bring that back to you. But all in all, I thought it was a, I thought it was a good meeting, I thought it was a good exercise. I don't know what anyone else thought about it.
I love it, I love it when he comes here, and it's nice to see the goals and objectives and problems and solutions from first other couple of times he came here, and see that we are making some progress, and we are doing the right things. And then it also reminds you of, hey, there's some stuff on that list you still didn't do yet.
That's right.
It's a good way to hold yourself accountable and.
I appreciate the fact that he, how did he put it, "He doesn't have a dog in the fight." So he can listen to us discuss different things that have happened over the past year, and he's not emotionally involved, and he can render us an objective opinion at the end of it.
Yeah, I was also that, meaning, so excuse me for talking up, I've had a pretty sore throat today. One of the things that I got out of this is sometimes we don't use our own individual things enough as a team to move forward, and that's one of the things he pushed out to us too, that we don't take advantage of. Greg strikes Marty's, mine annoys some, Cliff's either, so something we need to really work on as a group.
Yeah, utilizing each other is something that we did stress a lot. There's a different strength, I think, with everybody on this panel, so. I like it, can't wait for next year, we'll see what we can screw up between now and then.
We better have two of those three things.
Yeah, you know, Lou coming for you if your homework's not done. Anything else on Lou? Okay, water and sewer, Mike.
At our first meeting in January, we discussed a proposal for evaluation of the city assets, and at the time, the city was not interested in contributing funds for those valuations. And I did notify the township of that, and really kind of at the point of, what do we do next? So I put a PowerPoint up for you. Go ahead, start that. Basically, looking at the future of the water and sewer services with Lowell Charter Township. Go to the next slide. And so where do we go in regard to the future water and sewer services? What do we know now? The city is nearly built out, and there's really not much room for new development inside the city. The city will be able to correct their infiltration and influence use to where we don't need to expand the wastewater treatment facilities on our end. We also know that the service area that we provide services in Lowell Charter Township is continuing to grow. And the demand for water services, we're also looking at demand for water and sewer services outside the service area in Lowell Charter Township. And we also know that water production and sales are continuing to expand. Currently, we have a water and wastewater agreement with the township that is a wholesale agreement for.
agreement for water, which basically provides service to the perimeter area of Fulton, Alden Nash, Foreman, and Cumberland. And the current wastewater agreement, which is somewhat different, there's an agreement that services the same area and Lowell Charter Township has 18% capacity or ownership up to 282,000 gallons per day. And at this time, the township has utilized about 47% of their 18% of that capacity. And they're getting close to utilizing their full 18%. So also, there is a proposed development opportunity at Alden Nash and Interstate 96, which is going to need significant water and sewer access and capacity. And, but that development that they're discussing is not in the, in the current service area. So basically what I've done is I've tried to look at different options to consider and I've put, from what I see, the pros and cons to each one of those. And what I'd really like to maybe at some point, get some further direction as to where the council wants to go. The options to consider are we could just modify the current agreements to treat both water and sewer as wholesale entities for the current service area and creating an advisory board for the city and Charter Township that recommends improvements to the system. That's one option. Another option we have is we can require 425 agreements for future development into the current system that's outside the current service area. We could also create an authority itself, 50% of the assets paid for by the Charter Township to create an authority. So these are the three things that we're looking at. If you look at the pros for modifying the current agreements, it protects the city in account, protects the city in account for path investment and interest made to the system over time. The majority of the customers in the system are in the city. It would also clean up the current agreements, which currently don't align. The advisory board, which.
Mike, you mean because the wastewater is different than the.
Correct. Basically, the one is treated as a wholesale customer. The methodologies for, are different mainly because the water agreement is more of a wholesale agreement. And then the other, the other, the wastewater agreement is dealt more with capacity. Am I missing anything, Dick?
That's good. That's correct. The only thing that differs is how the rates are set.
Correct.
Are a little different in each agreement. They really, if you were to modify the agreement, you would want to have the same methodology for both the water rates and sewer rates.
And the reason they're a wholesale account is because they have their own people in service that it is.
Are, I don't think that's necessarily the reason. I think we get the water to a certain point.
And they own everything.
Then they, you'd be on that point. Right.
The same thing with sewer, Greg, they set it to a point and then the city receives it, treats and disposes of it. The agreement provided at one time that the city, for an additional fee, would operate and maintain the township water system and sewer system. But over time, that has changed and the township arranges for that themselves without the city providing those services.
Okay. Thank you. Also, this allows the city to consider 425 agreements for future development areas outside the current service area. As I've been pretty adamant about is I cannot recommend extending service out of the current service area without 425. Also, upgrades for future development can be addressed by those needing to connect, not the current rate payer. Some of the cons to this was that the Charter of Township would not have 50% ownership into the system, which they don't have currently, but that is, that is a con to the agreement. If we created an authority, some of the pros are this will be a one-time cash infusion to the city of several million dollars possibly. The city would still be responsible for facility operations. It may be good for regionalization of future services and it does give the township equal say towards the future. Some of the cons are this is a one-time cash infusion to the city. Once you receive that cash, that's kind of it. It will require, most likely, the city cannot use 425 agreements for future development in Lowell Charter Township outside the service area. It's also unknown at this time that this will cause rate increases for rate payers to accommodate transfer to the authority. Those remain to be seen. In regards to a 425 agreement, the pros are while this property is too far from annexation, which I would not recommend, 425 is a worry tool to protect townships from annexation. New revenue for the city to provide their, our award-winning water and sewer to facilitate new development. Our water and sewer is our best economic tool that we have. The Charter of Township can receive more revenue from 425 than what they would currently levy. That's very common across these agreements statewide. That's something that a lot, and for example, Ionia does that with their, with their, with their communities that they customer with, so it's not uncommon. And the Charter of Township will still have control of the area for planning, code enforcement, law enforcement, if they so choose. Some of the cons, well, from the city's end, I really don't see any. The worst case scenario is that we don't provide the service. Other things to consider, will the development by the freeway impact future economic development in the city? We don't know. Will the land use in the township change from rural to more urban in areas where the lines will pass? How do you address when those, when those people, if they do, how do they, how do you address it when they connect? The current agreements do nothing to benefit the city other than lower some fixed treatment costs, plant costs at this time. And new development without a 425 agreement will bring no new taxable value or other revenue to the city in the future. So that's just a short little summary of your options. And I'm not necessarily asking you to make a decision tonight, but at some point, I'd like to engage the council and see where you want to go with this.
The current agreements were put in place without a 425 agreement.
That's correct.
Do we know the logic why that was done or?
There wasn't a 425 at the time.
It was 79 or 78.
Eighty, I want to say 87, 86, 87.
Definitely. Right. They're quite interesting when you read about the 425, ways they've been used in, I couldn't find any community anywhere that got services from a different, or a township got from the city without a 425 involved.
There's, there's very few statewide. I know, for example, Midland has set up something a little different, does it back in the 60s? They, they, they required some of the neighboring townships who were, they designated a corridor for development. And if you were in that corridor, you had to annex into the city, is what they set up. And then anything out that, they just solo it wholesale. So they've spread out their district a little bit through that process. But it's, it's not uncommon. It, I mean, 425s are very common.
And you had emailed us something about you had polled 20 other city managers for similar situations and no one had done it without a 425?
Yeah, I mean, there was a couple of different, some, couple of different options, but most of it, and even at, when I was at the city's manager conference, I did have a number of city managers, basically, you know, they would basically come back to me. Do not do that without a 425.
So the other option is they develop their own system or get water from Grand Rapids? Would Grand Rapids get a 425 from them?
I don't know what Grand Rapids would do. I mean, they would probably, they'd do that more as a wholesale anyway. You could probably explain it better than I can.
Sure. Probably Grand Rapids can't serve them because it's too, too far. The price would be prohibitive to get water and sewer to that location, both because of distance and topography. Grand Rapids would not require a 425. They pay customer service agreements with the surrounding communities, including the township. So they're one of the few that do not have 425 agreements. Although there are specific 425 agreements between Grand Rapids and other communities, but not for water and sewer service. There were some other reasons for those 425 agreements.
Police and fire services?
No, it's, it has to do really with economic development incentives. Grand Rapids is a qualified local unit of government for some of the benefits, economic development benefits that you can receive specifically to the brownfield benefits and surrounding communities do not meet those qualifications. And so they've done a 425 to make those available.
Hold those doors up.
Yeah. And remember, Grand Rapids is another, instead of the 425 that you don't have, and that is Grand Rapids has a city income tax. So when they do do a 425 for economic development, they realize and split income tax revenues.
Did you say we don't have a gut?
No, I said you don't. Left the gut out.
Speaking for myself, when I first heard about the development thing, I was pretty excited. I figured no matter how hooker by crook, it sounded like a great idea. Then once I delved into the 425 a little deeper and I understood where Mike was coming from, I couldn't imagine that we would want to do that without a 425. Is there resistance from the developer on the 425 or is it the township? Or is that something we should talk about later?
I think it's more the developer from the meetings that we had. It's just, it's a cost thing to him. He has to set up his infrastructure out there at the most economical price he can. So he's trying to make the best deal he can. And I'm in the same spot that you are. We're all about the Lowell community and doing the best we can. But when you find out that no one else has done it this way and then, you know, are we smarter than, you know, 25 or 30 other places? Are we dumber if we do it? And I think one thing that we have on top of these two tools are, I think Lowell Light Power is part of the package.
Correct.
That if you get sewer and water from us, I mean, we want to see this work, but there's just some questions that we have that we don't want to do something.
Could I add something?
Sure.
The developer said.
Can you, should you go up to the?
I can, yes.
Thank you.
You're not bashful.
And you've got new needs, so I know you want.
The developer has said that he's going to go with his own water system as it is. It's too expensive to get it from Lowell. And he also has told me that he will not do a 425. He will proceed with building his own system, which we may partner with it for all the future development on the south side of the river and, and other places. So that's the feedback I got from him.
Thanks.
Well, I think it'd be good to get, I know we've done some smaller meetings before, regulated, Jerry Bill and the attorneys, of course. But I think it'd be good to engage the whole council, maybe the developer of the township board too, unless jury of middle suffice. But I think it's a whole meeting on its own. I mean, sit here and hash it out for two hours and get nowhere. So I'd look to see it either as a committee of the whole or as a totally separate meeting because I think there's a lot to unpack.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
So if everybody could, that we'll table it and then we'll get a date set up where everybody can be there and lead their case.
Right. But should we be realistic about it too? If we're saying there needs to be a 425 and they're saying no way, is there a point in even meeting?
Yeah. Well, if you have a developer saying no for one, develop, that's all the growth is still going to be out there in Virgens Township. And they might want to do the same thing. So it would be good to at least get something down on people who are at. And I think either way, we need to modify the current agreement so they at least match up. So people know what they're getting. And maybe there's stuff from way before that we need to look at too that we missed that's being equated or.
If, no other purpose, we can get our ducks in a row and this is our policy going forward so that the next time a developer wants to do something, we can say, well, here's the program and we don't have to. We want their power.
So thank you. Good, we'll go ahead.
Make a motion to table this. It's a future date.
All right. Motion in a second. Any other discussion, Jerry or Bill, anything else? You guys good?
I'm sorry.
Good for right now. It comes back later. Sue.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. In the new business, we're going to look at item A, striking taxes.
Yes, every year you get this. We do, we do need to strike some taxes. Our state treasurer exercised her due diligence in an effort to collect personal property taxes, which are listed in your packet. Tried contacting them by placing phone calls, sending out past due notices. And it's about $582.99, which she has requested to be stricken from the rolls. And I'm recommending that Lowell City Council approve striking for the 2014 personal property taxes from the rolls. We do this every year. It's nothing.
Over than last year.
Yeah, I think last year was about $3,000.
You can tell better in collecting.
She does a good job of collecting. You'd be impressed.
All right, I'll look for that motion then to strike 582.99.
So moved.
Support. All right, any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
Item B, 2019 Planning Commission Report.
As part of modifications to the Michigan Planning and Zoning Enabling Act, we are required to provide a annual report with the city council. And this report is in accordance to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. The city Lowell Planning Commission met 14 times during 2019. Meetings consisted of 11 regular meetings, two joint meetings with Lowell City Council and one joint meeting with Lowell Charter Township and Virgens Township. Commissioner and tenants pre-presented a quorum during each regular meeting and public hearings were held in accordance with zoning ordinance requirements when applicable. The activities of the Lowell Planning Commission are as follows. The Planning Commission held a joint meeting with city council in January and August to discuss the regulation of recreational marijuana. The board subsequently discussed and established special land use zoning requirements for these establishments. A site plan review was submitted by the following applicants and approved with conditions for 521 West Main, 1300 West Main, which was the McDonald's expansion, 312 East Main, which was the Superior Law Office Apartments, 2560 Bowls, which is the Virgens Township, Virgens Broadbent Small Utility Building Construction. They also, they also approved a special land use for the Airbnb at 2179 G Drive. Site plan review and special land use application for B and D truck and trailer at 2486 West Main and 236 Alden Nash. First staging area for mobile shipping containers was approved with conditions. P and D application was, was a recommended, was reviewed and recommended for approval with conditions to the city council for a review flash located at 219 High Street. A rezoning request for 2560 Bowls from industrial to public facility was approved. A site plan for a small utility building on the set was approved in May. Discussion took place regarding whether retail locations within city limits selling CBD projects, products should be regulated. It was determined that nothing should be done to regulate or prohibit these products. Rezoning of six non-conforming single-family residential properties located on Main Street between Smith and Amity from C3 to C1 was established to bring the properties into conformity. This also allows current property owners to rebuild in the event of a tragedy they require replacement of the home. Andy Moore of Williams &amp; Works presented basic training for the board. The training reviewed the basic duties and expectations of planning commission board members. As a continuation of reviewing all zoning ordinances and updating accordingly, non-residential districts were discussed. Site plan review and finishes are the remaining sections that need to be reviewed before the complete zoning ordinance review process is complete and is likely to occur in 2020. This was submitted by.